We will call this regularly scheduled meeting to order and we will concurrently call to order the meetings for the Redevelopment Agency, the Rail Authority, the Airport Authority, the Library Authority, and the Water Authority. Did I miss any of them? They're all going to be opened concurrently. The custom inhabit of this council is we begin every meeting first with an invocation. Tonight it will be led by Pastor Ray Gemmi of the Jubilee Community Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Chief of Police, Captain Mark Taylor. Please stand.
Father, we come before you tonight and we just thank you for the city in which we live. We also thank you for the leaders that you've given us and we pray your blessing on them. And we pray your blessing on this meeting tonight. Just let everything be guided by you and let decisions that are made be in accordance with your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We want to welcome each and every one of you. We're glad that you're here. It's a cold and windy and soon to be rainy night. Most all of you would probably prefer to be elsewhere, but we are grateful that you're here. Does anybody in the audience want to sing "Happy Birthday" to our city manager, John Roberts?[102.86][102.86](Laughter). Or would you rather pay to have nobody sing?
I'll chip in.
No, you'll pay.
Well, let's at least extend happy birthday wishes to our city manager, Mr. Roberts. We will not divulge his age, but the fact he has no hair ought to be indicative of the aging process. Happy birthday, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
The first item on each agenda for each of the agencies that I previously mentioned is what is referred to as public comment. And public comment is that opportunity afforded by state statute for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council, or the Redevelopment Agency, or the Water Authority, or the Library, or the Rail, or the Airport Authority, on any subject that's within our jurisdiction and area of responsibility. If you're going to address the council or any of those other agencies under public comment, we would ask that you fill out one of these white cards. They're available in the foyer. Pass it to the city clerk. That way we will have the information necessary to communicate with you in the future should we need to either provide you with information, or request more information from you, or notify you of a scheduled item on the agenda. Because we don't know what's going to be shared with us at public comment, generally speaking, the council or the other agency boards will not respond directly to things that are brought up under public comment. That's why we need the card, so that we can communicate with you in the future. So at this point, I have two public comment cards. And the first one, in the order they received, is from Tim Brun, wishing to address the council under public comment. Sir?[223.62][223.62](Gestures) I should indicate, I apologize. I should indicate, we limit three minutes per speaker under public comment.
Good evening. My name's Tim Brun. I'm a citizen of Victorville. And you've known me for the past several years, with my son with asthma. And I appreciate all your support for the paramedic program, along with when I filled your city council chambers with 150 people to have more law enforcement. Today I bring you terrible, terrible news. At 09:22 this morning, I was a victim, along with my neighbor, of a felony in my neighborhood. Absolutely outrageous. Assault with a deadly weapon. I live on Fence Rider Way. I had dropped my daughter off at school, come home to find four people robbing my neighbor. In that process, I called the sheriffs, which they responded excellently. And in the interim, these individuals tried to run me over with my witness of my neighbor in my vehicle. I was able to get a plate number and the swift action of the Sheriff's Department were able to effectively arrest four of these individuals while they were breaking into another place less than a quarter mile from my place, and I live in Eagle Ranch. The thing is, is we've come time around about the crime and so forth. And what's very disheartening is this. Our sheriffs are understaffed, overworked, and they are outgunned. I witnessed with my own eyes how these individuals tried to snuff me out because I came in to my own neighborhood. And my wife and my five-year-old son were two homes away from these punks that had rang the doorbell. I know I'm upset because, number one, our sheriffs deserve, and I have people, they deserve to have police dogs and more sheriffs on the street. I'm more than willing to go to businesses and raise money for this. And I ask you as the city council, the city is under siege. I know you have your sanctions and everything else you do against the gangs. We live in a nice neighborhood. I and my neighbors are sick and tired of being victims of crime. You can look in the sheriff's log. You can look two weeks ago, a home invasion directly across. You come down my cul-de-sac. Everyone takes pride in their home. The lawns are cut, homeownership ride. And the poor sheriffs, outgunned, overstaffed, and everything else. And my plea here is, is that, not here to be the cringe, is you authorize emergency funding for more sheriffs. It is clear and present danger to the city and to the health of the city. I appreciate all of you and what you're doing to get the paramedics on our fire engines. As Captain Whedon and the Fire Department has addressed that, along with my passion. And my other passion has always been with the sheriff. They're the front line to our city. We call ourselves the key to the high desert. And you can look it up and feel free to listen to the call, too. I had my cellphone. I called 911, realizing it will go to the CHP, hanging up and calling the sheriff dispatch directly. The time is 9:22 a.m. And you can listen exactly what happened and what occurred. And I thank God for the sheriffs and their prompt response. But I'm here to be their advocate, and I'll be here every single time. There needs to be more sheriffs. There needs to be police dogs. And you need to continue to take the crime off the street. I thank God it happened to a person like me and not another person or innocent person. But this is the second one in less than two weeks in our neighborhood. And you can call all the crime stats up. And it's not just this or local. They're hitting us hard in Eagle Ranch, along with other areas of the city. And we're the most underpoliced and the sheriff's hands are tied. And I hold all of you in the city council, you get all your money from the land of alimony fees, you approve all the housing, the city is rich. You have a nice $27 million city council chamber? Share it with the sheriffs. Get them the police dogs they need. And we need to look at McGruff. We should show McGruff, take a bite out of crime. And I want to just thank you for your time. I know my time's up, but thank you for your time. I hope you all have a Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays. And I hope you take it to heart. I'm a victim and I'm sick of it. And so are my neighbors and the citizens. And I'm sick of seeing the sheriffs. And I don't want to have the blood on my hands, and neither do any of you, when I read in the press about something happening to a sheriff.
Thank you. Mr. Brun, your time is up. I let you go over. Thank you.
Good. And I thank you and I hope you take action.
Thank you, Mr. Brun. I don't normally comment at public comment, but I am going to address two very quick issues for you. First off, we have never denied requests from the Sheriff's Department for increased manpower. We on our own, on more than one occasion, have on this dais funded additional law enforcement personnel. And we have never been asked to provide dogs. I don't know whether dogs are even used in this county, but all of our law enforcement or decisions are made in concert with what Captain Mark Taylor and the people in the command structure of the Sheriff's Department feel is appropriate. And so they've heard what you've had to say, and we will wait to hear from our law enforcement professionals in terms of what they want this council to do. It will not be a unilateral act. We will not tell the Sheriff's Department or Captain Taylor how to please or what he needs. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Norm Miller. And I give you the choice, I can either sing "Happy Birthday" or wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Those are not mutually exclusive activities, Mr. Miller. You can do both.
Well, I think I'll leave it where it is right now. Anyway, what I wanted to talk about is on the paramedics. I've looked at the report that was written up in October. And I've, a couple of things stuck out in my mind, and I just wanted to bring them up. I'm not an expert on this. I don't know too much about fire departments and paramedics and that, but I did notice one thing. There's a request that there should be four firemen on an engine. And I go along with that, except for one thing. It costs a lot more money. And most of the requests that's in here for is for paramedics, not for firemen. And in reading the report, it says there's like 8,400 emergency calls and like 400 fire calls. Well, it seems like we're putting the fourth one on there for fire, which is not going to happen very much where we really need for the paramedic part of it. So I'm thinking that maybe we can get by with three people for now, or three members for now. Keep the cost down. And then as the money comes in for whatever or however, then you can put a fourth man on there. And one of the things I noticed in there is that, it wasn't in the report, but I found out, was that county in Hisparia only uses three people on their fire engines, and they do have a paramedic on there. So it can be done. And I think maybe if you look at it like that, you can see the cost. The bottom line is the cost. And what can we do to get the cost or keep the cost down so we can get the paramedics? That's the other bottom line. We have to have the paramedics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. That's all of the cards I have for people wishing to address under public comment. Before we go into the formal part of the agenda, I would indicate that we have several revisions to the city council agenda and to the RDA agenda. I will mention those only because if you're here for those items, you may want to adjust your schedule accordingly. On the city council items, the request from Public Information Department deals with the presentation of military banners. We're going to do that in just a moment. There's a request to move city council, written item number 10, to the public hearing section. Get some more information as to why that is going to occur. Item three is a request from Suncow to remove city council consent calendar item number 6P. A request from the city attorney to remove item 16, which is a closed session item dealing with the Mason Esqually Road. And there's a revision to the RDA agenda, and that's a request to move RDA, written item five, to public hearing, again dealing with the PowerPoint presentation. I'm not sure that's going to occur, but we will deal with that in a minute. And then lastly, because I know there are a couple of people here that may be here for item three on the council, which is the public hearing to deal with proposed resolution 07341. That item is not going to be dealt with. There's been a request from the BIA that that item be continued for 45 days or thereabouts. And so that item will be continued for approximately 45 days, which would take us to February, what?
The first meeting in February, which I'm sorry, I don't recall what the date is offhand.
All this technology, we have no calendars.
What meeting you went for?
First meeting in February.
Meeting in February.
Fifteenth? Oh, February? Five?
Five or eight?
Five.
Okay. Item three will be continued February 5, 7 o'clock, these chambers. Mr. DeBortnowski, in his role as the city attorney, always insists that even though we're not going to do anything, that I open the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing on city council agenda, item number three, dealing with the proposed resolution 07341. I'll invite anyone in the audience who's here to speak on that subject, but whatever you say tonight will just be carried over until the first meeting in February. Anyone here who wishes to address the council on agenda item three, proposed resolution 07341, which deals with development impact fees. Hearing that, I will leave that public hearing open and continue it to February 5, 7 a.m., these chambers. Now I'm going to go back to the presentations of two military banners to two of our families. I'll turn this matter over to Councilman Rothschild, who's going to pinch hit for Councilman Cabrealis, who can't talk, his voice has left him or is about to. Councilman Rothschild.
He's in the Army, stationed in Iraq. And you'll be accepting this one here, half of the city of Victorville. Anthony?
I just want to say thank you to everybody. This is such an honor. I am Eddie Cruz's wife, April Cruz. My husband's in Iraq right now, in Tahrir. I have seven months to go, and I am very proud of my husband. And I just thank you all for your support.
Second award have the parents, Lieutenant Frye and Debbie Frye. Debbie? And this is for Yvette Marie Sanchez, and she's in the Air Force and stationed in Baghdad at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rothschild, Mr. Mayor, and the city council members. I would never correct a council member, but my captain is here and I'm not a lieutenant. So.[1055.92][1055.92](Laughter). Deputy Frye, and I'm happy to be a deputy sheriff in the city. And it is our honor. I'm really pleased that you would honor these kids, because that's what they are, kids. And they go over and they fight. They go over and they fight, and they stand proud, and they put their lives on the line, just like we do, but even more so. Bigger weapons, more manpower, we're crooks. And they do it. And they do it for a lot less money than we do what we do. And we're proud of them, and we really appreciate this banner. And we'll fly it proudly. Thank you, sir.[1096.48][1096.48](Applause).
And I'd like to also, since this program does have expenses, and we have many businesses out there that are participating, I'd like to also honor one of our benefactors of the banners of support here. From the Southern California Edison, Nancy, oh Nancy, Nancy Jackson.
On behalf of Southern California Edison, we want to say that we are a proud sponsor of our nation and our men and women in the service. And we understand that freedom is not free. So we do honor those who are out there doing what they can on behalf of our country for us.[1162.23][1162.23](Applause).
Okay. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is nothing new or no presentations for the library board.
Then we will move to the Rail Authority. There are no revisions that I'm aware of to the Rail Authority agenda. If that's correct, then that meeting will stand adjourned. The Airport Authority has item three, which is a request to consider proposed resolution SCLA 07008, which if adopted, would authorize the authority executive to execute a security agreement with General Alucard. I would indicate that this is a companion item to city council agenda item number nine, which I will advance, and we will deal with the Airport Authority, item three concurrently with the city council agenda item number nine, because they are one and the same. Questions or comments from the Airport Authority Board and/or from members of the city council? Then item three on SCLA and item nine on the city council will be continued till the end of the closed session items. Item four, proposed resolution SCLA 07009, which if adopted, would approve four ground lease agreements, four master sublease agreements, a new loan, and the restructuring of certain outstanding loan obligations between the authority and KND affiliates LLC. Questions or comments from members of the Airport Authority?
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. May we vote? Agenda item number five is request to approve the revision of the SCLA Fuel Farm Design Contract to URS Corporation to appropriate an additional $65,000. Questions from members of the authority? Not a motion would be in order?
Second.
Second. May we vote? Unless there's an add-on item, then that would conclude the Airport Authority agenda, except for the item three, which will be dealt with at the conclusion of the closed The Redevelopment Agency, item three is a consent calendar. Those items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial, will be adopted with one motion, unless there's a request for removal.
Removed.
Second.
That concludes the consent calendar. Item four is a resolution of the Redevelopment Agency approving a professional services agreement with the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Inland Empire Small Business Development Center. Questions or comments from the authority? Not a motion would be in order?
Move for the item.
Second.
Second. May we vote? Item six is a closed session item, as set forth in the agenda. Unless there's add-on items to the Redevelopment Agency, that would...
Skip over.
Now, are you saying that it has been properly? It also does not indicate any type of a public presentation. So I'm curious to know what happened to cause this to end up this way.[1460.83][1460.83](Gestures) Well, we'll pull number five. We'll handle it with item 10 on the city council agenda. We'll call them both up at this time. And I will... Mr. Roberts, are you handling it, or is Mr. Metzler?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item is brought to you not only as a project that's intended to help meet and satisfy our inclusionary housing requirements, but there's a lot of strategy that goes along with this type of development. And it's a project that we've been working on with our partner, I call them SoCal Housing still, but they've recently merged to form a company called National Community Renaissance. But what we're trying to accomplish with this development is a much larger economic goal. Currently in the city, as far as housing opportunities that exist, we've seen certainly a single-family housing opportunities exist. And we know that, of course, single-family housing opportunities are fairly expensive. Today's median home price is probably right now at 275, and that's at a low compared to what it was six months ago. But to give you a perspective, still, it requires about a gross annual income of about $80,000 just to afford the mortgage that goes along with that kind of home purchase. Second alternative you have is to rent an apartment here in the community. And over the last seven years, the types of apartment communities that we've seen being developed principally have been the very low-income tax credit type communities. They're built with a lot of free equity, I call it. It's basically tax credit equity that's granted to developers by the state. And what we've got is really an unserved need in the middle to where you're actually providing affordable housing opportunities to workforce-type families, families that are making moderate incomes up to about $70,000 annually. So this project is before you, is really intended to satisfy that unmet need. But from a larger perspective, it's intended to try to encourage market rate development of apartments without any subsidy from the city in the long term. In essence, what we're trying to accomplish is have these nice, much more lavish-looking apartment communities being built without public assistance. So with that, the community that we're proposing before you is 128-year-old apartment community. It's immediately north of the existing Impressions at Valley Center. We're calling this community the Signature at Valley Center. It's a project that we've worked on with a lot of effort. What you'll find in this community is that it's got amenities that can't be matched by any other community that's currently existing in the city. So we're certainly trying to increase the standard of multifamily development that's being developed. Ironically, you're going to find, with this community, you're going to find the highest of rents as well. But that's representative of the trade-off in amenities. So with that, the recommendation of staff is to approve the loan structure. But before doing so, I wanted to have a brief presentation by John Seymour, who's the director of acquisition and has been the principal that we've been working with to bring this project to fruition.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, if you want to have the presentation, that's fine. I'm going to move the item right now. If you want to have the presentation, that's fine, but I'm going to move the item. I've looked at it and think it's a great opportunity for this city.
I have a question. Is this more geared for workforce-type housing?
Yeah. By definition, we're calling it moderate-income housing, and it does meet our moderate-income housing requirements. But basically, it'll be workforce families that make up...
I think it's a good project.
Is there a second to Mr. Hunter's motion?
Second.
Second. May we vote?
Go to public hearing, please.
That's the problem when I get an agenda that's not put together, and it doesn't say anything about a public hearing. I'm a little cranky about this. Well, I don't have the revisions, Mr. DeBortnowski.
There was a miscommunication between economic development and city clerk's office, and so that's our...
All right. I'll declare open the public hearing on both RDA item five and city council number 10. Invite anyone in the audience who wish to be heard for or against, pro or con, on this It would be evidenced by proposed resolution R07016. Anyone wish to be heard? Close the public hearing. Is there a second to Mr. Hunter's motion? Second. May we vote? Mr. Seymour, your project's approved. That concludes the Redevelopment Agency. We'll go to the Water District. No revisions to that agenda that I see. Written communication is approval of a will-serv letter for American Housing Group for 15 lots in tract 17179. Questions or comments from members of the council sitting as the water district board?
For approval?
Second.
Vote? Unless there's an add-on item, that concludes the water district. We will go to the city council agenda. We've already dealt with the visions and the banner, so we will go to item three, which we've already indicated is the development impact fee item that's been continued to February the 5th, 7 o'clock these chambers. Item four is a request to adopt resolution 07218, which if adopted would confirm assessments and proceedings for unpaid rubbish collection sewer use fees, everything related to Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees. Questions or comments from members of the council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. I'll invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on the AB 939 fees. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, council.
Second.
Vote. Agenda item five, A through F, deal with the engineer's report and the formation of the street lighting assessment district for the following tracks, tracks 15083-3, 15... excuse me, 16489 and track 16828. There are five reporting resolutions. Questions or comments from members of the council? Not, I'll open the public hearing on items five, A through F. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, either with regard to the approval of the engineer's report and/or the formation of the street lighting assessment districts. Anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing no public testimony, I'll close the public hearings on items five, A through F and invite one motion for all five items.
They're moved. Go ahead.
Second.
Moved and seconded, may we vote?
Sorry, I need to record a second.
Second.
Item six is the consent calendar. These items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
They're moved.
Mayor Caldwell, there is a request to remove item number 6P.
6P is removed. Are we going to deal with that separately tonight or just coming off?
Just removed.
May we vote?
I'll make the motion with the removal of P.
Second.
Agenda item seven deals with the paramedic program and I'll turn that to Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you've all known, we've been going back and forth with this program for some time and I don't want to speak for the entire council, but I get the sense that we're all in favor of a paramedic program. It's just trying to figure out what is the best paramedic program for the city of Victorville and I think cost has a lot to do with that along with the services. So what I'm proposing is instead of piecemealing these studies together, let's go out and do a comprehensive study of what's going to be the best for the city of Victorville. And I've detailed them on the list, but I'm going to go ahead and read them if it's okay with Mr. Mayor that I do this, just so we get these out on the table. My suggestion is we use the same committee that we had before, Rudy, I believe you and the camp chief and whoever was on that committee, is obtain a bid from the San Bernardino County Fire Department for contract services, which would include a three-and/or-four-man unit for services for the city of Victorville.
In both instances with paramedic?
With paramedics on both instances. Obtain a bid from American Medical Response, AMR ambulance service to provide the same and guarantee the same services we would receive as a fire department. Contact ISO and ask them for a ranking or rating guarantee. If we were to do this with a three-man unit, can we keep our same level-three rating? That can be done, I understand. I've talked to a few people. It can be done by a letter from the mayor requesting that information detailing what we plan on doing. They will respond in writing if we will hold, in fact, hold that rating detailing the number of stations we will have. So, and I've got that letter put together. Cost analysis from the finance department on the feasibility of operating a three-unformate person unit along with opening our next fire station, so where do we sit financially to be able to do this? Meet with Victor Valley College regarding the paramedic training. I understand from speaking to a couple of people out there who run the program for the paramedics out there, that they'd be willing to put together a paramedic training program just for the city of Victorville at a cost, but to sit with them, find out what it costs for us to do that and kind of be able to get the firemen through it who work here currently and work on their timeframe to look at that. So that's going to be time-consuming. Invite fire chiefs from other departments who are currently using three-man units and four-man unit, paramedic units, and find out the pros and cons. Let's find out what the good and bad is of this whole thing and how's it going to work? And do they use other outside services? For instance, the county, or let's use Apple Valley or Astoria, they respond to a medical emergency with a paramedic on their fire engine or their medic ambulance, but they also have AMR respond, so they end up with two paramedics at the same time. Currently, the way we do it, we end up with one paramedic. If they have two engines and two firemen, ambulances respond, you get four, we get two. Those are the things we need to look at. They're getting the double service than we're getting currently, so how does that really work and does it benefit us? There's other things we need to look at when we deal with AMR. As a fire department, we can go in and do life-saving issues in confined spaces. For instance, we have earthquakes and it collapses a house. AMR ambulance cannot do that. They are not trained, they're not able to go into confined spaces and perform advanced life-saving services. So that's where you find, that's why fire departments have paramedics as opposed to just using ambulance service because they can supply services that fire ambulance services cannot. So getting chiefs in for that, pros and cons. Contact other cities in California who are using fee programs and find out how it's working if they're using the fee. I know there's, Hermosa Beach has a program where you can pay, I think it's $15 a month and you never get charged for a service, but if you don't pay that $15 a month, then you get charged on a per-service basis of $100 or whatever the case may be. So look at those other alternatives that are possibly for raising funds to pay for some of these issues we're looking at. So it's a long list of things and it's not going to be real easy to do or a short period of time and I know I'd like to get through it quickly. I put down here to come back with the March 2008 meeting and bring some of that information back. If we can do that, wonderful. I think RFPs or requests for proposals are going to be, you know, 60 days going out, coming back. So that's my proposal, to do a real comprehensive analysis to see what's the best way to go for the city instead of piecemealing like we've been doing.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
I would just like to add one item to that and that would be that we look at the stacking up at emergency rooms because that is an impact on the emergency medical response or the timing where they can, you know, if they're stacked up, they can't go and transport because they're stacked up or there's delays in the car.
That's a good point, Rudy. Two weeks ago on Friday night, the hospitals in the Victor Valley were backed up bedwised two hours. Ambulances were sitting at hospitals for two hours not being able to release their patients, which caused a couple of issues in the city and the area here where ambulance is getting around and I heard about that because of at work. But that's a good point and I think we need to bring the hospital administrators in to discuss that, so if we can add that to the list, a discussion with hospital administrators, is there anything we can do about bed delays because that does affect the ambulance service? It doesn't affect the fire department paramedics per se, but it does affect the ambulances drastically and there's nothing we can do to get around that. If there's bed delays, there's bed delays and they can't leave. So we'll put that on the list.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's what I was going to mention about AMR. Our times that they just have you... One other thing. Is this it?
Yes.
For sure?
Well, it's all I can think of unless anybody...
Are we going to finally get this thing?
I think the items that Bob has are, the options and the analysis will give us a pretty good idea what may be the best for us.
Right.
It covers various options completely and I think that's what we're looking for.
I understand we need to have all this information, but I'm just saying, are we really going to do this in March?
Well, yeah, and I think that we bring this back.
Will we have all the information?
There may not be information that's back by that time and Rudy's on the committee. He's going to have to, you know, head up of what's coming back and will it be here? But I think this is our best option to really get down to the fact of what is going to be the best for the city of Victorville? Is it a three-man unit? Can we do that? Is it a four-man unit? How does it work? And is the cost going to, you know, can we afford it? And that's what our finance director is going to have to determine, what's the best way for us to do it? And then this council is going to have to decide, okay, do we go with an ambulance service? Do we go with paramedics? Do we go with San Bernardino County? You know, what is it we do? And we're going to have to make that hard decision. That's my proposal. That's my motion.
Questions or comments?
Need a complete list there. I can't think of any other option we can consider.
I would have one item to add to the analysis and that is that if through either putting the paramedic on as the third member of the unit and/or the delay of building the next station just simply because of financial reasons and/or the inability to fund the additional firemen that are going to be needed, if any or all of those might cause a bump from a class-three department to a class-five, I think that we should have some sense of whether that's likely to happen and if so, what the impacts on our city, if any, would be.
That will be included in the letter you send to ISO and that will all be detailed in there, what if we go from this, this, or this? Okay?
Well, I think what Terry is saying is too is if there's going to be impact on our, the building of our fire station.
Right.
That's a very important item for us as part of fire protection.
And again, I'm going to speak on my portion now. I really think we can do it with a three-man unit. I honestly do. You know, I've talked to other departments around the area that are using three-mans. In fact, most of the cities around here are using three-man units, which would not be much more of a cost to us because we've already hired that person and be a bump as far as being the paramedic, which wouldn't cost us much more to do except for training possibly. Then we wouldn't have to worry too much about the funds for the new fire stations, which I think are very important. That's going to help us keep our class rating by making sure we have those fire stations placed accurately. But again, that's what the analysis is for and Rudy, you know, I'm throwing this to you, I'm only bringing it up. You're on the committee, you're the one that's got to bring it back to us.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I'm all in favor of it. I'll sign the letter tomorrow. An aspiring young man from our planning commission who understands well the insurance cost impacts between class-three and class-five, so it might be worthwhile to take advantage of his willingness to volunteer some of his time, comment from the premium perspective.
I'll take whatever.
How's that for being volunteered?
I was just going to say, he's been volunteering.
No?
You've just been volunteering, yeah.
Well, I sense that it's unanimous to support Councilman Hunter's request to go forward with this.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then to item eight is proposed resolution 07343, which if adopted would repeal resolution 8379 and authorize the city clerk to acknowledge and accept certain offers of dedication and authorize the recordation of those offers of dedication. Questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order?
Second.
Item nine, proposed resolution 07340, which was adopted and reported out of closed session. Are we going to hold this till at the end of the closed session items? We'll hold item nine. Item number 10, we've already dealt with concurrently with RDA number five. We now have agenda item 11, which is a whole series of resolutions, which if adopted would approve the engineer's report for the landscaping and street lighting assessment district, 1 through 18. Then we have as item 11B, another series of resolutions, which if adopted would be the intention of annexing all of the tracks enumerated in item 11B and then again, items 1 through 18, a resolution of intent of the city council to form the street lighting assessment districts for the tracks that have been enumerated. Questions or comments from members of the council? This is not a public hearing item.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, may we vote? Item 12 is a claim against the city by Cheryl Preston Gomez, Victorville number 0713. I move the claim be denied and refer to staff for further processing.
Second or first, whatever.
May we vote? Item 13 is presentation reports from council members. Councilman Carielis? Well, I'm going to mention one for him. Some of us got up early, went to a special breakfast for a special recognition to Rudy and his wife. Probably won't say this exactly right, but outstanding contributions to the inland empire Latino community. Special recognition and we congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rudy.
Thank you.
Great stuff.
May that be taken?
Please. Omen? Rothchild, Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I have two items. One is if, I'm not sure, Mr. Gargan, if we had set this up to be on the agenda yet for the LMAT issue for the fees? I know that we were going to try to have it on, but I don't know if we've set it up yet or not, so I would like to make sure that one meeting we get it on.
That was in February, correct?
February, okay, very good. The second item is, and I know I'm the one that always brings this up, so holidays are coming up. I would like to propose to this council that we allow the staff to leave on half-day on the Friday before Christmas, which is next, was the date, 21st?
21st.
21st, at noon to go home.
Anybody want to second Santa Claus's motion? Been seconded by Ms. Claus. May we vote?
It don't want to work. Second, see? Oh, now it's working, okay.
Unanimous.
I just want to say...
There are no Scrooges on this council.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, healthy, safe and to all of everyone.
I do have one, just one comment, and this has to do with the water, the runoff. You know, not only are we wasting water, but with the freezes now, it's become dangerous. I don't know what department needs to look at that, but somebody should.
Water department.
Water department and code of enforcement, whoever it is, needs to look at that because it's dangerous in the morning.
I know in Eagle Ranch, there's almost everyone who's loaded with water.
Same old problem.
And a lot of these people work down the hill and realize that their sprinklers are coming out. They're already on their way to work and...
I have no additional items. I will invite the council and appropriate staff into closed session for the items that are set forth on the city council's agenda, the RDA. Third, are any closed session besides council and RDA?
Mr. Mayor, prior to adjourning, I would request clarification for the need and purpose of the closed session addendum item, public employee performance evaluation, city manager.
I have no idea. I never saw that item until tonight.
Well, I'm hoping you're doing my evaluation on my birthday. That could result in some, a nice outcome.
I'll evaluate if you're old enough or young enough to stay on. But like Mr. Caldwell says, Mayor said, you're bald, so must be time to retire.
Okay, we do not anticipate reportable action at the conclusion of the closed sessions, but I cannot guarantee that. You're all welcome to stay here. It's pretty boring sitting in here, but it's warmer than outside. But I want you to know if we come out of closed session and there's not a soul in attendance, our feelings will not be hurt. I echo Councilwoman Allman's comments. I hope you all have a Merry Christmas, a wonderful, uh, holiday time, and we look forward to seeing some of you, perhaps all of you, uh, at our first meeting in January, which will be January...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. You get a long reprieve from listening to us. That's our Christmas present to you. We will now go into closed session.
I can't go anywhere, I got a TV.